All right, good evening, good afternoon board and those who have joined us this evening. Thank you to our lead team for being here. Thank you Jeff for joining us as well. You've certainly bring a lot to the table for discussion, you and Charlie as well, so welcome. We're gonna start this afternoon with working on facilities and Ezra dollars. Before we get started here, I do wanna make note before I forget about Quinell Heights Middle School. I want to acknowledge our maintenance department has been working there for the last several days. And I finished going through there this afternoon and the building is ready to show if we have any requests for showing. Maintenance department has done a great job and I've told Charlie that it looks really nice. It's clean, it's ready, so I just wanna make you all aware of that. And I'm happy if any of you want to take a tour of the building prior to, I'm happy to take you all in. All right, as we had a discussion at our board meeting, at our work session and board meeting last week, we left with some requests from the board to pursue some additional information for you. I have given you a sheet of paper that is whole-punched, you can add it to your notebook. But I'm gonna spend some time going over this worksheet with you and then hopefully we can respond to any questions that you will have as a result of this worksheet and any of the previous information which was provided to you by Danine West. So you had asked for additional information in regard to roofs and HVAC in our existing schools. If you'll notice, we have column one, we have the school listed and we did that by zone with the high school being the first school listed, then the middle and then the elementarys. We also did roof, a column for roof, a column for notes, then HVAC and another column for notes. So we'll just start at the top with Sullivan East High School. We've done quite a bit of work on roofs at East High School since 2015. We did do in 2015 the cafeteria and gym and the CTE building just got a roof, entire roof replacement in 2022. Right now, we have some water standing on an A circle, which is a flat roof and we have some drains that are plugged because of that. Of course Sullivan East Middle School is new and if y'all don't mind, I'll just go through this list in its entirety and then we'll open it up for questions and go back and forth, okay? Of course Sullivan East Middle School is new and no need for roof there. Let me back up, I'll just do roof and HVAC at the same time. East High School on the HVAC, even though that school is the same age as Central, our current Central Middle, in that evaluation process and in talking to our personnel, they felt like the HVAC system at East High School was manageable in not experiencing the difficulty that we have at Central and it is different, there's different systems there. Of course East Middle School is new, both roof and HVAC and we're in good shape there. Mary Hughes, you can see, came on the list as number one for roof replacement, replacement and also in the HVAC column. Mary Hughes, the entire building needs a new roof. The suggestion is to cover shingles with metal roofing. It also needs gutter replacement. The estimate to replace the shingle roof with standing seam metal roof, replace the fascia and new guttering is about seven hundred and eighty thousand and we pulled that from Danine's report. HVAC, we also listed that as the number one need overall. They currently have AC units in the windows and the boilers need replacing with central HVAC and again, the estimated cost as per Danine is two point two million. West City Elementary, which has entered and gotten on our radar as a result of this request. It was on our radar before but not in the work that we asked Danine to do. But we listed West City Elementary as number two, needs shankled roof replaced and needs gutter replacement. The replacement of the shingle roof, current roof is thirty six years old. Replace guttering and fascia estimate six hundred thousand dollars. And we listed them as number three as needs with HVAC. The second and third floor in the original building still has window air conditioners and radiators. The rest of the building is on central heat and air. Estimate in process of replacing the current cooling tower, that is currently in Ezra dollars. That is moving quite slowly, I would add. In addition to this estimate possible, an additional possible seven hundred and fifty thousand. Emmett, we listed as number three on the needs of the roof, the original building. Kitchen art and music, this is just a section of that building. The new addition is good, the estimate for the remaining kitchen art and music would be about two hundred and fifty thousand. And again, I put this is not an official estimate, it was not possible for us to get official estimates on all this in the length of time that we had. The HVAC is good, they have electric boilers. We move on to the west end of the county, we have Westridge, of course new building with new roof, new HVAC. Feel good about that. The Westridge Annex, of course, is the older part, the CTE building at Central. The roof is in good shape but the HVAC will soon or at some point in the near future need replacing. They have old units and they can no longer get parts for those units. That being said, we did not rank it as in the top five or six on the HVAC needs and we can come back to that in a minute. Sullivan Central Middle School, roof is good. The gym dome, dome was re-roofed in the nineties and we currently have in Ezra two point oh, the replacement for HVAC at Central Middle. Sullivan Heights Middle School, the roof is original to the building. Right now, it is what we would consider manageable. But we also listed number five on our list for HVAC, chillers and rooftop units need replacing. Estimate to replace both the chillers is two hundred and seventy five thousand. Replace the rooftop air handler units, seven hundred and fifty thousand. We're looking at a little over a million dollars for that project there. And Charlie does have an older estimate on that replacement, so we did have some information to go on from there. We increased it a little bit. Central Heights, when we talked about Central Heights, the thing that kept coming back to me is it's our best building. It's our most efficient building in the county. So good roof, good HVAC and quite frankly, very little needs for that building and then lo and behold, yesterday it all went down the tubes. We had some, we had drains and plumbing and several things like that go wrong. But regardless, we got a good situation there. Again, Holston Elementary, we've got a good situation there with the roof. It was re-roofed in twenty thirteen and the HVAC is doing well there. Indian Springs Roof Fair, the pod, which is the newer part of that building was re-roofed in twenty seventeen. They came in as number two and probably could have tied for number one for HVAC with window units. They have electric wall heaters and they need central HVAC and the estimated cost as per the D-West report was one point one million. Katrin Elementary, again, you know, we've had quite a bit of work there, renovation. But throughout all that, the kitchen was not re-roofed and the kitchen component of that building does need a roof, a new roofing piece And we estimated that at a hundred and fifty thousand and the HVAC there is good. Miller Perry, um, comes in at number three on the list. Uh, original building needs to be re-roofed, we estimated a half million, again, not an official estimate. And number five on the HVAC list, we still have window units in the original building. Um, we gotta count on that and it was about thirteen, how many was it?
We went back and counted, he'd forgotten the la, uh, the auditorium.
Okay.
We came up with twen- in the library, so we came up with twenty-three window air conditioners.
Okay, twenty-three window air conditioners currently at Miller Perry. But the new addition and the back addition both have HVAC currently, so it's just the original building there. Again, you know, when we look at the estimate for Miller Perry, we estimated about eight hundred thousand dollars to, uh, add that wean to the HVAC system. Then we get to Rock Springs, uh, we felt good about the roof. We listed their kitchen cafeteria as number four on the list and we estimated about a hundred thousand dollars there to add the HVAC just for that part of the building. Or to change it out. And that would be adding an exterior unit, not trying to replace the unit that's in the ceiling. Uh, it wouldn't be worth the time to pull it out there, is what I understood. Do you agree with that Jeff and Charlie? But to add a unit on the out, the exterior of the building for that. Lastly, we had Sullivan Gardens Elementary. Um, the roof came in, came in as good, the gym and the old kitchen were re-roofed in twenty eighteen and the HVAC is good there, even though we've had some challenges, uh, with what was going on in the cafeteria. It's a separate building, we still felt like that was a good situation. So if you look at the very bottom, what I've done there is on the roof ranked, we actually ranked those one, two, three, and we had two at three and then four. And all those totaled together and our best estimate was a little over three million dollars. And then if you look at the column for HVAC rank, again, we, we had one through five and we listed two locations at number five. And we're looking at almost six million dollars there. So, um, if you look above the blue where it says grand total, if you look at what we've listed here as our, uh, top five or six in each area, it comes out to be a little over nine million dollars. Now, you know, I would, I would say that we're open to questions. Charlie and Jeff are here, they can answer, um, a lot better than I can, but, uh, we spent consider, I spent a considerable amount of time with them and the, um, other foremen. They've done a really good job when we went back and started looking at, um, their documentation. Uh, they had the documentation for, uh, roofs, which they were able to pull out and we went through all of that. Um, so as far as systems and what's existing and those kinds of things, you know, I, I yielded them for your questions, but, um, I'll turn it over to you all for questions. Mr. Hughes?
Wow, what's the justification on the roof for Mary Hughes? Why, why is it a metal roof or some?
It's, uh.
What's our experience with that and what's?
Well, well, number one, it's in a historic district. And the original building, they felt like was either slate or metal roofing. So anything on the exterior, when you're in a historic district, uh, they sort of want it as is, you know what I'm saying? And, uh, that is the reason why. And actually, right now, we can put a standing seam roof, which is similar to what's on East Middle, same design. Some of us think as cost-wise as it would be to put a shingle roof back on it, uh, cost will be, and then the metal roof would last longer than a shingle roof. Uh, two months ago, we had those shingles, was it about two months ago? A storm came through, we had quite a few shingles blow off. We had to rent a SkyTrak and now a lot of shingles, now re-roof a lot of it because it's, it's, and of course, if you've been there, you see how the fascia is and.
Yeah, we went over on the today.
Yes.
The other thing that we talked about though too with the metal roof is you don't have to remove the shingles.
Yeah, you could leave those shingles on or you wouldn't have to worry about that.
Less labor intensive.
You know what I'm saying?
And it makes it more, less likely to.
Sure, uh, I've talked to a couple of architects. And I guess it's a personal thing, some says I don't like to, it's not a problem to do it. If you wanna leave the shingles on there and cover them up, you know, strip it and go over it. Some says, well, we like to remove them to see what's under it, if we've got deteriorated lumber or s- or, you know, what I'm saying, plywood or something like that, so.
That's a good point.
You could bid it out, if you did it, go to it and put a bid out. You could put it as an offer to remove shingles or delete them, you know what I'm saying?
Because we took those shingles off and found out they're a bad roof, wood. It'd be easier to do that now than after you had a metal roof.
Sure, yes.
The only thing I've ever noticed about the, the metal roofs in residential areas, early on at least, it seemed like they faded off quick and just, as something, has there any been any improvements, is that still?
Yeah, and then your commercial roofing and then a standing seam roof is a little different. You notice your roofs on residential, you see a lot of screws in them. The standing seam is, if you're gonna go over, can get to where you can look at the top of East Middle, the new East Middle, you have a seam that clips in and you don't have near the screws penetrating, that's more or less likely to a roof. And it's a thicker gauge metal.
What color are we using?
I would probably go with, the shingles on there is now a brown, like shingle. I would probably go with about the same color as, uh, that's on East Middle. Now, I know most of the roofs and I talked to, uh, Amber Torbit with the Historical Society, you know, most of the houses around there, it's in the district, has a metal tin color, you know, galvanized color. I don't know that we'd want to go with that on that roof, it might expand, you know, but color would be a, just, just a personal preference.
But what's the timeline on the fading and, because some of them start looking injured.
Most of you, you're black, we'll change to a charcoal gray over time and some colors do fade more, you know? Uh, I don't know if there's a thirty-year, twenty-year, ten-year fade guarantee on them, I have no clue.
What's happening?
There's not.
That's right.
Um, and I'll, and I'll, being here just and talk about my home experience that I've just experienced within the past several months. Um, and I looked at, um, I looked at one metal roof, uh, that three years ago was twenty-some thousand dollars and I thought it was too expensive at the time and I turned it down, to which three or four months ago it was then sixty-seven thousand, uh, for my little, my little ranch style house. But I asked lots of questions during this process from that type of, of metal to the, uh, standing seam to the regular metal or tin, uh, to shingles. Um, I, like, like Mike, was very concerned about the fading, uh, because almost any red or green roof that was gone several years ago has oxidized to the point that it needs to be pressure washed or something. So I actually asked the guy at, uh, Harkler Road Roofing, was there a guarantee or? And he's, he told me that any, that any of them would fade or oxidize. And that there, there was not, now, I wasn't talking industrial. So there might be a completely different, um, list of expectations for a industrial, commercial, uh, type metal. But at that point in time, when I was talking to them about metal, they did recommend putting it on over top of my shingles, which is not what I wanted done, but they felt very good about it. Said that's what they even did on their own homes. So that's, and, and the comment was even made that if there was a leak and if there was, um, weak, um, or wet lumber, once you got the metal on, it wouldn't dry out, wasn't gonna rot anymore. That was just things that I learned personally in the past few months.
Are we sure that that metal meets the historical requirements or are we just assuming or?
Yeah.
For sure?
They felt like that the metal roof would be fine, you know what I'm saying?
Who's they, are we talking to Amber?
Amber and then there's a board, there's, uh, I don't know who this board is and she said, if we get to this point, I can send the information to her and she would send it on to the board, but she felt like, and I mentioned to her, she mentioned color. And I said, well, to me, probably the least likely to fade would be that bronze or that tan buckskin color, you know, what I'm saying? That love color would be, uh, less likely to fade and she agreed and she thought, you know, wouldn't be a problem with that.
I remember reading one time that if you affected five thousand feet of roof line, that we, you had to go and meet all the requirements for ADA and those type of things. At what point does that come into play? To, to remind you, that came up when we were talking about the weavers issue.
It's when you go inside the building. If you're going to, but side the building, you do anything that you look at and you start renovating, if it's determined, then you have to bring everything up to ADA, exterior roofs, no.
Is it five thousand, is that right?
I'm not sure exactly what, what the limit is.
What is percentage of the building?
Maybe.
I'm thinking it's a percentage of the building. There's weavers that want to take that all the way down and rebuild.
Might've been five thousand weavers for cause of its size, okay?
Yeah.
If we start and we say we're going to replace the roof there and it goes to that board and they say, no, we're not okay with that, you gotta go back to the slate.
Uh, well slate, I mentioned that slate's completely out of the way, I don't know if you can get it or not.
I mean, so what, 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 I mean, you know, what's our, you know, responsibility at that point? Cause I mean, they can kind of, in a historic area, they kind of price you out of business.
It has a shingle roof.
It's got a shingle roof now.
So they.
So, but.
It could stay.
Yeah, that, yeah, before the historic thing was. That's why, that's why I don't know, cause I mean.
It's a good question, let's ask you that.
Yeah, I mean, so what happens?
If, if we need to, can we, can we get a shingle roof there?
Yes, but if we did that, I'd go with those architectural three, you know, the architectural type shingles.
So.
I don't, I haven't, I called actually a commercial roofer to try to get a cost, but which way he would go and I did not hear back from him before tonight's meeting, okay?
I, I'm still, still concerned over, I mean, this historic district was, it was named on the historic district after we put our shingle roof, it didn't have an original shingle roof.
Right.
So if we go back to replace a shingle roof and they got the historic district tag, you still can do his, you can still do shingles?
I think you can, yes.
I, I'd like to know that before we start down that path, because I mean, I just don't wanna, you know, I, I just don't know where it goes. I'm, I'm grateful for placing a roof.
They just sort of recommended that they'd like to see it back, a metal roof, but I don't think it's, I don't think they can dictate it since it was already a shingle roof once it became.
Can you get a copy of the guidelines, Howdy Blatt's Historic District Guidelines? Can you get a copy of that?
Uh, Jeff said that, that rock building at Blood City Middle.
Yes.
You know, the old rock, the music building back there, that it was historical and when they replaced it, they put metal on it and they were good with it.
Okay.
That they did what?
Put a metal roof on that old rock building at Blood City Middle School, you know, the music room back there. And they were good with metal on it. Yeah. Yeah.
As, as, as maintenance person, what would you rather have?
I personally don't see the metal roof, it would last longer and be less maintenance in the, the length of it.
Find out if that's the failure.
Okay.
Matthew thinks the deuce, guidelines on ribs out.
What'd you find?
On the self account of that. The ones you're looking at, Matt, two, two thousand fourteen is.
How long has the metal roof been on at Katrin? Do you know? Those parts, I know it's not all, but, cause to me, it's all faded.
What did they write about that?
I think a dollar's fifteen, it's supposed to be ten year ago, but I don't think she started there the first year. And to me, I don't think it's faded that bad, do you?
No.
That's the blue, the district, the blue.
Yeah.
I think some color, the blue, red, green, any of those might fade worse than the.
Like a lot of these calls. Paul did the.
Yeah, the real black though.
Yeah. Is that seven hundred and eighty thousand, is that included guttering and the, uh, metal roof?
Uh, yeah, the way I figured that out, uh, if I look at Murray Hughes.
That was on there, that was on, uh, part of the guttering was on Mary Hughes.
We, we figured out the lineal foot of guttering that would need to be replaced and how many squares of shingles it would take and how many square foot it would.
That's the total for both the gutter and the roof.
Yep. Like I said, that was just based on things we had, you know what I'm saying?
Certificate of Appropriateness.
And it, and it just depends on how deep you have to go with that. If you can show them kind of what you're hoping and ask them a question or are they gonna have to see the specifics of everything? Thinking before they're gonna say, yeah.
I met with a lady on that one day and they made it sound to me like it was a pretty difficult process. I think her name was, uh, she's there in the corner.
Mary Ann.
Egan.
Yep.
They have to see the specifics, we probably don't have time to.
That's what I was gonna say, it's kinda makes it tougher.
Replacement or if the, uh, there's none, I'm gonna call it, I'm gonna call it.
I wanna do it, I'm gonna do it.
This story, no information stacked for it.
Honestly, I think they'll be so excited that the front of Mary Hughes will have a better appearance that they will help us get things pushed through very quickly because it, the progress will be such an assore. And I think that they honestly will help us to do almost anything. I don't think that they want, I think they want the fascia and all that to be put back and, and look very similar. But I, I think if we do that, I think they will be, um, very accepting. And again, I don't know what the process is as far as paperwork, but I think they will help us and support us just as long as we are helping that building to look better. Do you agree, Randy?
I agree one hundred percent. The only thing I've heard that they would like, what you call it, a Coppola?
The Coppola at the time, yeah.
Yeah, they would like that to remain, but I don't think that would be an issue.
Of course.
But I think absolutely they would be tickled to hear that something's being discussed and potentially done.
Yeah, does it, does that go anywhere above the Howdy Blatt Historic Guidelines? Is there a national group that has to approve anything, somebody know?
I don't think it's on the national historical places, you know what I'm saying? It's just that area there and Amber did not mention anything to me about that.
So they've just, once they get final approval, you would be okay?
Just a local.
How big is that group? Is it?
From the, I don't know.
It's got, it's got it listed, but that's from two thousand nine, it's the last time.
That's when, that's when they got their first estimation, I think, in two thousand nine. Is, is John Wiegand there?
I just go, trying to slice this through a picture of the guidelines.
I don't think Johnny's on the board.
He's not.
Uh, I do have a parent, I have a child in my school that's on the board, I know. I, I don't think they allow Johnny on there.
I think what we could do there.
And he, I don't, I don't believe he's calling as part of that or?
Community Senator or something, I don't, yeah.
I think what we could do there is like Charlie said, we could bid it both ways. If that's what the board, if the board says they wanna re-roof or do Mary Hughes, we could bid it as a shingle roof and we could bid it also as a metal roof and we could bid an alternate to the metal roof of removal of shingles or not. So we could bid it, you know, that way.
I guess, I guess my concern was the same thing Randall said was, you know, we are on kind of a time crunch, you know? So how long does that process take? Does it take them months to?
It says the city got app taken to review by the fifteenth of the month that we heard it's ready to reading and the third Thursday of the following month.
Yeah, so we're looking at two months worth of, if it's there by the fifteenth of this, of September, it'll be heard by.
If this is still, this was back to a twenty forty.
Twenty twenty.
But I, again, I think they would be willing to have a call meeting to approve this.
That's what I was gonna say.
And again, I'm only, I don't even, I don't even know who else is on it other than Mary Ann, I know Mary Ann. Um, but I just, I honestly, I just think they'd have a call meeting to help us with the process if, if they thought at all we were gonna do something to improve.
So I think it's a possibility you might be able to reach out to them and see if any of them show up tomorrow? Or just, just to, to, to say it's what we're doing.
It's hard to tell, cause it's.
This is.
Shannon Riles one of the next.
Well, I think it's two thousand nine.
Oh, okay.
They did, they didn't know for it until two thousand nineteen to the Sullivan County website. They did, they didn't know for it until two thousand nineteen, until the, until the county website.
Dennis Hauser, county commissioner?
Do you know who's on, he is never.
The only one I know is, of course, Mar- under Mary Ann Hager and, um, Shannon Rouse. Is it Ma- Shannon Rouse or what?
She, she's just staff advisor.
Oh, that's the only one that I know. I haven't seen that list, so I may know some of the others, but.
It's like it's an old list, and.
Yeah, I think that's. I think that's where we go with this.
Is Amber, Amber on the board, Charlie? Is Amber on that board?
She's a staff.
She's a staff.
Okay, she's got to live in that community too.
Amber, this is Mary Rouse, how are you? And I put you on speaker in a work session, and we have some questions about Mary Hughes and historic guidelines, et cetera. Okay, Amber, you're now on speaker, and all the board is present, along with director Raflowski and support staff and news media. And we're, we're currently discussing how we're gonna spend our ESR funds. On the schools in Sullivan County, and right now, uh, we're talking about Mary Hughes. And we're talking about the roof specifically right now. And we're looking at possibly a metal roof, but we might also consider a shingle roof. But then when we look at the guidelines that are posted on the Sullivan County website. The process says that they will be turned in like one day, and then they'll be reviewed, uh, like the next month of the next month's ma- meeting. We're on kind of a, um. A short.
So the Historic Zoning Commission has a set meeting date, as all, you know, boards and commissions do, but they can hold a special. Meeting upon, um, you know, consensus, just like kind of commission planning commission, everybody can hold a special call meeting. We actually typically do that for our applicants. Anyway, to try to meet their schedule, so our Historic Zoning Commission is. Usually very easy to work with to get a meeting scheduled. Um, otherwise, it would be, uh, September seventh, the next time they meet.
That's correct, where is the, Amber, where's the application?
Uh, yeah, I email it to the person.
Okay, can you?
You know, Bobby Reed did the county website, and a lot of our forms were so old, he got rid of them and gradually adding them back as we. Updated with COVID policies and stuff like that, but I can email it to you.
If you would email me that application, and that way, uh, we can get that filled out and possibly submit it for their September seventh meeting.
That would be great.
Okay, what other questions?
Can we give to Walter in case of the four being among them to the.
Amber, can you email that application to us later tonight or very first thing in the morning, cause we have a real big meeting tomorrow. You're a good woman. Okay, I appreciate that.
Of course.
Other questions?
How many people on the board? How many are on the board, Amber?
Um, well, we have a seven member board, we have one vacancy right now, um, so six, um.
The webs- the website still has Dennis Hauser on there, Amber, so we really didn't know who else was on there.
Right, I know, I don't have control over the website, I apologize, but thank you for being resourceful to go to the website. Um, right, we changed it to a seven member board in order to keep Mr. Hauser engaged and on the board, but then when he passed away. Um, you know, we had to fill his spot. So we have, um, we have Marion Hager and Bush, Anita Long. Uh, our architect is Hiram Rash, I'm sure you all know him from going to Rash Kane. Architects, um, we have our county historian, Tony Galloway. Uh, and then a vacancy, so, um, that the mayor is trying to fill probably happen next month.
Okay, let me see if we have other questions.
How long does the process last, is it just a simple vote, or is it a?
Is it a simple vote, once the application's?
It's a simple vote, what we would need ideally is, you know, a cop- something, well, of course, the application and then typically pictures. And I can take the pictures or Charlie can or whoever, um, of the existing situation. And then, um, the application will ask for, you know, what your plans are, what materials you're gonna use. If you have sample pictures, like brochures from the metal, the metal company, the roofing company, usually they give you specs, that's always nice to have, but, yeah.
And does that committee, just that committee, once they vote, then it's over and done, right?
Once they vote, it's over and done, the Historic Zoning Commission.
Any other questions, board? Okay, Amber, I appreciate very much you taking my call and answering our questions.
Of course. Okay, I will send this application over to to Evelyn right now, or I can send it to somebody else, or both?
Evelyn is great.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Amber.
Oh, you're welcome.
Talk soon, bye bye.
HVAC won't be an issue of Mary Hughes, right, as far as historic district?
No. You can do anything inside the building, anything, and it doesn't affect it, it's only exterior appears.
I just want to drive by that.
The the Sullivan East High School where it says drains are plugged and water standing, and that just seems like unplugging, or is there something more to that?
The A circle, which is the academic right hand end, if you're standing in front. You got the dome, and then there's a certain section that's flat around it, and if you go up on the hill behind it, there's a section that's always water standing. It has the interior gutter system, there are five inch drains. That's a oddball size that you can't get it, and where that water stood over time, the threads on the piping inside has rested out. And we're getting a lot of leaks in the building from the drain itself. So we've ordered some plugs, and then we'll plug up this drain, and it's going to the next one until, and eventually that one's gonna rust out, okay? So it would require a lot of interior, cause you got interior drains, and problem is, we got five inch pipe, and you just can't find a five inch pipe.
Was that addressed back when we did the roof back?
This was on the section that was done. Uh, prior to the two thousand fifteen seventeen section, this was.
How old is this section here?
Two thousand one to two thousand fiveish.
And you was probably administrator there at that time, right?
So, still, I mean, this. What, I mean, what's that?
It was originally designed to hold water, because that rubber type roof, it it doesn't deteriorate as bad underwater, because of UV and all that, okay? Uh, that was the original design for it, to hold the water, and, uh. I guess, just looking, that, and then, of course, the original roof prior to that, that's how the building was designed, and I. At that time, Jeff, was you there at that time to know whether it was gravel and tar on the bottom section?
I think it was gravel and tar.
Yeah.
It started with.
I mean, but I guess what I'm hearing is that the mandate is we're gonna plug this hole in the tether hole to it, and plug this hole in the tether hole to it. But at some point, that water is heavy on top of that roof, so is there a, is there a fix, is there a?
You'd have to go in and completely change the whole interior drain system to a pipe that we can work with.
So the problem is not the roof, basically, it's all about.
No, it's it's the drains, it's the drain pipes.
If you re-roofed it, is there any way that you can do a slope on that flat part to then have the guttering outside rather than interior?
Could be, you'd have to do an exterior guttering and then run it off, you know what I'm saying, have it drain away from the building.
I mean, it seems to me like that would be the cheaper, better fix, and again, I'm just speaking as a homeowner, not as a.
Wasn't there drainage issues when we did the roof back in seventeen?
Did what, right?
Wasn't there drainage issues back when we did the other part in fifteen sixteen, did they have to do some things with the drains then?
Yeah, they had to raise, raise the curves up and the drains up and stuff like that, yeah.
That was it.
Yeah. And when we just re-roofed the Bo-Tech building, it's just got completed, we, it was basically a flat roof, and we did put, where the old shop section. The ahide roof is gar- gravel and tar was, and we put slope and more insulation on it, so we now have a slope to the drains on it and done away with that flat. Section of that roof now, so we have a sloped roof up there.
Well, you know, I knew roof seventeen years ago was not, that's not bad, I'm just, I mean, so if you could actually redo the interior, it it sounds. I mean, everything's more expensive and harder than it sounds, but is it that challenging?
Yeah, it's all encased in masonry walls, and then it's also in the floor system, you know, it it's it's pretty intricate, the way it is. And it's up through the ceiling and.
Nothing's exposed.
Nothing's exposed when we get to. We've had a couple of them do that, you know what I'm saying, that's only issue with that with the roof.
Charlie roughly down to Sullivan Central Middle School, I hope says the roof is good, do you have a date of when that roof was installed, helped to done with the fifth part?
No, I think.
Same time you found. Seems like a long time ago.
Two thousand two. Are you looking at it, Charlie? Have you got the?
Yes, I see, uh.
So it was done, it was done after the dome was done.
No, two thousand two, the roof was done, two thousand two, and then in two thousand and six, the gym was done. The common, and in two thousand and seven, the commons, office library, little theater, and the, uh, gym circle was done.
I think it was, I've got on here that the. Uh, gym dome re-roofed in the nineties, cause I knew that happened, because that's when I was there.
Knew it was there.
So it's early nineties, and then we had, we evidently had something else done in two thousand six. But the entire gym, the entire dome was done in the early nineties.
I know they did some work on it later on, if you remember. We said two thousand six, Charlie, was that?
Yes. Well, uh, what's summit mean on this?
That's the company.
Okay.
That's the company, and and Leferny, Leferny, Lapherny.
Lapherny, two thousand six, gym summit, two thousand seven, commons, office library, so that, there was work done in oh six and oh seven.
I guess the only other, uh, the only question is on the Sullivan Heights Middle School. Talk about building roofing is management manageable, and that's where we're talking about having TPs of metal over top of units, so. What does manageable mean, if if that's, if that's manageable, what does that?
That's the actual roof, the rooftop HVAC unit.
Right.
It's it's where it's rested out and under, and you just can't get to it, and it, sometimes it leaks around and inside. The roof itself, is a built up gravel roof, it's good, the only problem we have covers, there's a pipe wall around most of the roof, you know, a knee wall. And sometimes the rubber in time will crack, and we, it's not, we haven't had any actual leaks or any roof deterioration as far as the main roof, and actually, it's. It's the original to the building, okay? But we just don't have any issues with the roof in there, it's the HVAC units that's actually causing some problems we're having.
So if we did what's over on the right hand side of HVAC, that actually fixes the roof problems to actually take care of it?
We got a couple of rooftop units up there that we've actually put some metal over it just to keep the rain from.
Okay, so if we replace that, then, okay.
Drop it down to Indian Springs, there's a fairer area.
That's the shingle part.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the old part.
Yes, yes.
But we don't need to get in position like we did with the domes, where we had major issues, just, uh. Doesn't seem like it was five years ago, it must five years ago, we had moved on the building. Is there leakage in the shingle roof now?
Big spring there as far as outside on the back, you know, right behind, what would I say, on the backside of the thing. We have a couple of the down spout guttering systems, it's, I guess it's that old terracotta material. That's slowly collapsed, we have, and but we, there's, before I came, they had dug like a drainage ditch toward the playground, you know what I'm saying? But as far as roof, we hadn't had any, the biggest thing we had was the pot area, and we redone it. Uh, three year ago again, because of the condensation, you know, that we had in there, because the insulation had deteriorated.
That's why I said we had a long way till we get into that.
True.
Situation. Do you know what the age is on the roof there, or is this fair? I was thinking, the people study said it was. Not good shape.
I don't have a date as to when it was done, okay?
I just, just gonna go back to ask the same question, just gonna make sure, cause I'm just reading it, I'm just trying to correct my head. Says the roof at Sullivan Heights Middle Schools is original in the building, manageable, so, it's okay?
Yes.
Okay, so it's good?
Yeah.
If we replace the one, the HVAC work good, okay, good? And so the same thing at HVACs at East, manageable?
We just, last winter, we just put those, uh, Norway put those new.
Yeah, the expansion tanks.
Expansion tanks in the boiler room. Biggest problem, I guess, if there's anything, that Sullivan East is the only school that we have that uses heating oil. It's expensive, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Uh. You know, the middle school's propane, I'd love to see gas at some point in time come down through there, natural gas, but who knows? But it's it's manageable with the boiler system, that way, the, our handling units outside, we have fan motors that go out. You know, because you're, they run so much to cool such a large section.
I guess, yeah, just looking at that, cause I, in the, the first, you know, group that we have, from the Dean, it basically had, gosh, almost six million dollars worth of. But it's mostly plumbing, and I was, I was looking at his HVAC, it was mostly plumbing and taking care of some of the pipes, so. So the system itself is good.
But East is the same age as Central.
Correct.
But.
They have constant problems at Central, and we don't have very few ever have at East.
Now, you're using heating oil at East, all right? Is that the difference in, cause those pipes inside are fifty years old when you look at.
That's not different, it's just all hot water. It's.
Just water.
The the fuel has nothing to do with the water loop system, it's it's all heated water, it's whether you heat it with. Fuel or propane or natural gas. A lot of the deal with Central was the insulation. It actually deteriorated the pipes. Um, the branch circuits coming off the main piping, they went with a rubber type insulation. Which held a lot of condensation in it. And just deteriorated that black iron pipe.
I'm just, I'm concerned that.
I mean, it is the same age, the the loop is the piping.
Is it the same pack and, is it the same type of pipe?
It is.
It's different insulation.
Different contract or different installation?
The part at Central that has the fiberglass insulation, there's no issues. All of it is what is covered with the roof, what they call rib attacks, it's a rubber insulation. Um, so that's where all of our problems have been.
The rubber made it swept in and the.
The condensation stayed inside of the rubber. That's it.
And it just, pipes just leave it.
Yeah.
So has the, has the East been inspected to see if there is any problem with, I know you've not had any reported, but is there any way to check it to see if there's? Condensation?
Not really.
Not really, cause it's a hard ceiling.
You gotta wait till the problem occurs.
But we haven't had any.
None at all.
Well, I know we've looked at Central several times.
Right.
Central's not here.
Yeah, we've had a lot, we've had, had to close school down a couple of, three times, and, and when we do, you have to drain the whole system. And then, then, then once you repair it, you fill it back up, it takes about about eight hours to fill all the lines back up and the tank back up, and then when you get it going. Sometimes it's caused. And then, then, then once you repair it, you fill it back up, it takes about, about eight hours to fill all the lines back up and the tank back up, and then when you get it going, sometimes it causes, sometimes it causes another leak, you know what I'm saying? You end up with another leak, so then you have to drain it all again, so we've lost several days of school at Central because of that.
How big are the, how thick are those pipes? Are they three inch, five inch, or, I mean, the pipes that go around it just varies?
They're like a six inch pipe, now, the thickness is probably forty gauge, you know what I'm saying, not really thick, but the biggest pipes are insulated in fiberglass. But as that line comes out, if you're in Central and see them ceiling units like y'all see, the line that comes off of it and goes to it is what's in the rubitex, and it's probably a two inch, inch and a half, two inch line, that's the one that gives us problems.
So East has the same two inch lines, that, that part is pretty much.
Best we can take.
What was the reason that you have different type of insulation, is designed by?
Guess, I don't guess.
Or just installer?
The installer, the architect drew it up, you know what I'm saying, and just the way the specs were written up whenever they built it.
It's probably the newest and greatest thing everybody.
Yeah.
They were all at the same time, or something?
Yeah, it's basically, yeah.
It's still just, they have different contracts.
It's just like, well, compared like north and south when they were built.
Yeah.
Two different contractors, two different architects.
The rubber's faster and easier.
North High School has never had a water line break underground, period. South will have two a year, the far, something, I don't know how many times we'll have to either shut school down, but going to rock springs or how it's designed. Built at the same time, and there's never been the first one that ever happened at North, as far as we own it, and South constantly. I guess it's like, the rubitex pretty much, if you got your heat pump at your house, the black rubber that's running on your line, it's going into your house, that's basically what, what the rubitex is, that's, that's pretty well the best way to explain.
That stuff deteriorates outside and.
It does, it does, and of course, the copper was not going to deteriorate before it was on that black iron pipe, you know, it holds that moisture, there it goes, it just eats it out.
So at Sullivan East, when it says manageable HVAC, that's, it's everything's good except for that. I mean, I, I don't, I don't, I'd like to actually know the, the price on Indian Springs part, cause if that's the point, then everything that we have is good or fair, I mean, good or new, or something, yeah, I mean, so, it's kinda good, and if we, cause the nine million still puts us somewhere.
We're not, we're not gonna be major renovations on Indian Springs, I would like to know what the cost to fix that roof.
Pre-roof it?
I'm sorry, we got other things too.
Do you wanna go by shingles or metal? I mean, generally, if you go by the shingles, I'd recommend.
I like metal, I said, but I'm.
Right, well, we can, you can bid it either way.
Bid it.
Yeah. And if you did do shingles, I'd do the architecturals, you know what I'm saying?
Right.
I, I look for a time, the three tab, just to be.
The architectural's got a thirty year warranty, that's what it is, so.
I would expect to lose under thirty years, I'd see where it gets something nice longer.
Well, it's about fifty years.
Oh, there you go.
But as, as we're looking at roofs, that's the only one that you rated fair, so I think it would be nice to be given extra money.
And it's not that deep, no?
And I just, I added that to roof rank, that's number five. Well, probably for that section, Charlie, would you say about three fifty?
Yeah, trying to figure how behind, how many square feet it is, you know what I'm saying, but I would say.
It's the whole, it's whole front, it's the back wing too, there's, there's the back connected wing there, is that, I can't remember.
Whole front, yeah. I think it's just the main.
Is that whole front?
Yeah.
Last thing is the whole front, I think we could estimate, estimate about three fifty there.
Probably that ball game, yeah.
Might be a little high, that's what, uh.
Of course, like most of these estimates, I didn't add the architect fee, you know what I'm saying, and, and various things.
It's just sort of like, with low. Low term.
And I know that if we bid it, we'll put in, if there's any deteriorating, you know, there's a contingency will be put to it in the architect fees and stuff like that, I was trying to do a quick ballpark, and I hope.
Pretty safe there.
These others I did high, I tried to go pretty high, I give an example, like the face shop, replace, I put a hundred dollars a linear foot. You know, I put, if we replace shingles, I sorta tried to figure it at four hundred dollars a square, that's tire off and put back on, I kinda went high with it. It's like thirty-five dollars a square foot for metal roof, and that's, that's about the figures I used, and I tried to go.
So pretty safe to have ten percent to, it's pretty.
Pretty safe.
Under, under HVAC, we talked about rock springs last week, may have the original HVAC in there for the main part of the building? Have we had any trouble with the, I know we got a problem with the kitchen part.
We've had a few of those classroom units that will go out, we've had to replace a couple of them, and we did compressors and stuff.
Yeah, compressor, we had to replace, we had one heat exchanger ruptured, and, you know, that, we can't get those, so we actually put a mini split heat pump system in that classroom. But if it's compressor or van motor or something like that, we can go, we don't go OEM of course, but, uh, we can get those, but if, if it comes to a heat exchanger or something like that, cause it's water source, heat pump. Um, we can't get those, so we, we went with the mini split in that one classroom, other than that. But they are, they are original to the building.
How, how many of those, is there, like, is it every classroom has?
Yeah, yeah, each individual classroom has, and the halls have.
So they're probably close to thirty there.
I don't know.
Uh, maybe more than that.
There's several in the hallways.
And all those are units that go until they don't, and once they don't, you gotta replace them with something else, cause there's no, no repair.
Got their stuff, right.
You don't wanna replace them now, just because.
Yeah.
If they're working.
Well, we had one classroom, the heat exchanger, and it leaked out in the classroom, you know, a couple of, and, uh, just, oh, we ended up taking the carpet out and laid a whole new tile floor in it, it, it was just.
It seems to be the thing anyway, right? I mean, we're not doing all the carpet anymore, we're mostly, mostly tile.
Doing any carpet.
Okay, that's what I was saying.
Very little, we did redo, uh, band area, course room at Sullivan Heights, uh, a few weeks ago. Uh, if you're, if it's noisy, leave it for acoustical purposes, but that's all.
The numbers you have down for Sullivan Heights now, for the almost million dollars, does that cover everything on the rooftop that needs to be done, for the chillers and?
Yeah, back in two thousand nineteen, I had, I have a quote, room train replacing those two units. Uh, at that time, it was, uh, well, basically say two hundred thousand, which, you know, I put two seventy-five, then maybe higher than that, and this is train for train. Now, those chillers on top were replaced at some point in time, but when they were replaced, they were used units, right?
Yeah. That's, the big chiller, that was the first, I guess, first phase of ESG. Uh, and, I'd hearsay, I guess, the big chiller, they have had in a motel somewhere, down south or something, ESG gave us a good price on that chiller, so it.
Would've worked.
Supposedly, no, it's supposed, now, that's just, I'm not, I don't know that a hundred percent sure, but that's what, you know, but they, uh.
But.
They had put it in, it wouldn't work for the building, they supposedly gave us a good price for it, and I guess that's why it acts like it.
And we do have a service contract with train on that big unit, it's so big that they, we have a service contract with them, and it's a yearly contract that we have with them to serve.
Need to be replaced.
But, yeah, it needs to be replaced at some point. The eight rooftop units, I had a local HVAC company come, actually, the same contractor that did the new high school, went at West Ridge, and they went to each unit, figured in the crane lifts, what it would take, you know, he figured it out. At that time, it was, well, here's his quote, but this was in two thousand and nineteen, uh, five hundred thirty-four thousand, and I put seven hundred fifty thousand, so, I'm just pulling it, just by cost rising. But this was an actual quote and actually specs for each, he went to each unit, pulled the model numbers off of it, he spent about a half a day or longer with the, with the senior Jeff, and he was very thorough on what it took.
But that's here, but take care of everything that's on the roof.
We hope, yes.
Uh, protect there from some of the leak issues.
Yes.
I guess you're marking it on.
So, I mean, if, just, you know, in my, in my, my concept of things, and just by asking around, that, uh, one of the conversations I had with Mr. Roflowski was that the best things you can do is make them comfortable, which in my mind is HVAC and lighting. So lighting seems like a thing too, that's, you know, really needed in all three of the studies that we had for Indian Springs and Mary Hughes and East, all had lighting. And lighting also seems like if you put an LED, it will save them, so, I mean, over time, it kinda pays for itself to something, so, if we start looking at, and I'm just taking for granted, I'm, I'm looking at this as, hey, that makes sense to me, nine million, then we'll look at the Indian Springs roof and see where we are on that, and look at lighting. Just, of the things that seem to be the most important to me, that's gonna help the kids, that's gonna help the teachers, that's gonna help them.
Could I just add that I mean, I'm sure lighting would fall in your measure.
Okay, well, thank you.
Sorry.
I appreciate, no, that's perfect, thank you for saying that, no, that's great.
Can I bring up something that may or may not be an issue with, I see on here with the, uh, Mary Hughes replacing with Central HVAC, I don't think that was a conversation last time. My question is, if, if Central HVAC is put in, would there be an issue with the electrical system, which being able to handle that? Uh, I thought that was an issue too, and I don't know, would that cause a problem for the existing electrical system?
I think that bigger, two more pushing, yeah.
And that's what she, yeah.
Did include electrical?
Yes.
From my understanding, okay.
Yeah.
Is, am I wrong with that?
Yeah, I don't know why, we tend to follow.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's been great.
So you're, you're looking, uh, what's on here, close to ten million dollars in time, you had, yeah, and, 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 for the rooftops at Central, uh, is that, is that Sullivan Heights? And you said lighting does not qualify under.
I'm, I'm reading back through, I just don't know that really it ties to, because it talks about to reduce the risk of virus transmission exposure to environmental health hazards, and supports, to support student health needs, and then it goes on to talk more about air quality. Um, air conditioning systems, filtering, purification, air cleaning, fans, window and door repair, replacement, I, I just, I don't think that we can get lighting.
I don't think lighting qualifies.
It would get, be really.
I was, I was actually looking at their list with your air.
Right.
Exactly right, so thank you for letting.
Mr. Jones, like, I had five thirty-four as a quote, and I had seven fifty, but I still can't say that that's true, and this was just a quote, you go to four B, you know what I'm saying?
I don't know, the train guy said that, that all need to be taken care of on top of it, whatever's there, was. If one of, if one of those guys were saying it, it kinda scares me that.
I'd be able to something new that's a qualify under H R I N. Unless it's an addition.
It can't not be a brand building, it, it would have to be an addition, if you could say it was to spread children out and increase social distancing, or.
So you, you could add, you could add a gym and make a, a social distancing room.
I would say we could try that. And all they can say is no.
Now, how fast is that process? Was it, was it very long?
Um. Twenty-four to forty-eight hours.
No, no, it depends on the grant, this one tends to take longer, the ELC grant is twenty-four hours, the safety grant is twelve hours, this one has been weeks a couple of times.
With the time pressure, you, you know.
I, I mean, I think they try, but I think so, everybody tries to do stuff at the same time, and then they're looking at all the school system basically at the same time.
What's the total in our S R line?
It's right at sixteen million.
Sixteen?
Mm-hmm.
But, but we, we spent some on architectural fees already, right?
Right, but it was, it was minimal.
Right.
If you look at your, in the back there, you'll see, um, we've spent, um, forty-five thousand already on the work that they've done. We estimated that if we went down this, this route, you know, we could be looking at another million, but. You're looking at sixteen point four, um, remaining, or that was there, about less than forty-five thousand.
Can't still let workers go away, cause they didn't really use it, I'm not sure, and so, I think.
When a, when a wish reach and age, I know, uh, in S R two point O. The heating system for Central is ready to be, is ready to go be in business, supposedly.
Supposedly.
But, uh, the last figures I heard was the annex would not be covered under that, not, not, the bill was gonna be so high, is that, is that, you understand me?
Mm-hmm, yes.
So does that still leave us with a?
I mean, we could still come back, if, if this is the direction you all wanna go, we could still come back and add the annex to this, because that's definitely got old units, they can't find parts.
Right.
Shouldn't work on that any longer. The annex. The annex, by part, I would say, Charlie, I, I'm gonna go seven fifty, eight hundred on doing the annex.
They were, whenever they.
Or HVAC.
When host and engineering was trying to do the plan for the annex, was there a major issue of being able to tie the two together with the electrical system and, uh, was it switch gear, is that, is that an issue with it, it was?
They wanted to replace the switch gear in the main building.
Right, then they wanted to do something outside of the annex that, do you remember G what he wants to?
It's still, the annex is using hot water for heat. Just like, just like East did.
From the main wheel.
Right.
So what they were trying to figure out is, when it was gonna be too much, it was still gonna leave us using the boilers if we left what we have there.
Right.
Uh, and changing piping to put hot water to that building, um. The last I've remembered, Derwin saying, he was work, trying to work up something for that, but I didn't hear anything after that.
Yeah, I haven't seen, he, he said he'd work up something separate for it.
Yes, that's the last I had.
Cause we didn't wanna use the same boiler in the same building and just run that one building over there, and, you know, if we're not gonna use the boiler for the big building, why are we gonna keep it running just for the little building, and I, you know, and he was looking at a separate package over there, that's the last I heard from Derwin.
Right. But I think we need to keep that one on, on the table for discussion purposes, to, to see what we can do with it. Cause he was talking, wasn't he talking about bringing a chiller, I mean, a subject from another school?
He mentioned one time about adding a chiller up there, on the back of it.
I think that's where, on the backside, wasn't it?
I think so.
Is that building too big to do like the individual kind of units or any, any kind of other, is that, that really the only option, or cause the way it's done, or?
Yeah, I think that's what he was saying, if I remember that, I didn't fully understand what he was.
No, they could go with.
You could go with the.
With the air-to-air heat pump type system on, where we have the units up there now, we have air, what they call air over air conditioning, with the hot water loop. And they actually talked about taking that out, putting new heat pump units up there, and there was a question on the electrical, but there's duct heaters in that building now. I think when we looked at it that day, I think we, you know, they'd be okay even on the electrical, we go with air-to-air heat pumps up there, in place of the hot water pool and the air conditioner. But then that still leaves that wing with those PTAC type units, we've talked about before, I don't know what, that, that would probably just be a new type of PTAC unit probably, or something down there. Uh, but we did, with Derwin that day, we did discuss going with air-to-air heat pumps, and I think that was the, that last day I talked to him, that he was gonna check it, but I hadn't heard any more after that.
I actually wanna get them dropped, dropped, dropped out and we end up with a, an issue with no being in whole area.
Yeah.
Or having, or having to use the boilers. Or having, or having to use the boilers in the main building and just, just to take care of that.
Take care of that, yeah, that's not, that's not very feasible.
Well, I love the bragging, so we fixed every, every roof and every air conditioning, we leaked one out, we get, totally.
And I can add that, that's number six.
Is host, host engineering going to do it, Central?
Yes. And they're doing Blood City coolant tower replacement, it should be ready to be at any minute.
I thought Central was ready.
Well, I did too. I called him a week before last about Blood Cities, and he was ready, said I'm about ready to send it out to Chris to bid.
But if, if, if the NH came in at a billion dollars, which might be on the high side, but the Central Middle School came in at what, four point something is what they estimated, about two point.
Right, five.
How much?
I thought it's close to five.
Eighty, maybe.
Four nine.
Four six, four nine, seven.
I was thinking.
Well, let's say it came in at a million and we added to this, we're still at ten point three.
You say ten point three?
Mm-hmm.
Should I at least stop by me and? Just leaving that to do a major project anyway, as far as a major project.
But if we get the roofs and the HVAC.
All of them, that burn off.
Yes, then I think that is major.
I'm, I'm in.
I know what you mean.
Yeah.
I, I was just saying, I still think that we can done a major thing, if we get, clean up all roofs and HVAC, it probably can.
Three point five is what we had for the, for the middle.
The original one.
Four point two. About four million dollars in annex.
So, five million, you know, we may be closer to that.
Yeah, it might be.
You know, maybe five point five, so it might not be, end up being this much. Of course, I think the roofs, and correct me if I'm wrong, the roofs are gonna be a whole lot easier to get done and quicker than the HVAC. And if we're, if the board is looking to go HVAC, we've gotta get that out yesterday.
Tomorrow night?
Yeah.
If that's what the board chooses to do tomorrow night. You have, you have this list of HVAC and roof needs, you have the list that the need has prepared for you at the, at the locations. Um, so, is there anything else that the board would want to have information about?
I guess my, my thing would be, I'd like first to, with my opinion, I'd like for us to do this and go ahead and start looking, bidding those out, because a lot of this is guesswork. I mean, most of this is, you know, we really don't know, this is all guesswork, so.
It is, it is, cause we, we couldn't pull, pull official bids together.
So, until we actually know how much more we have, and don't really know what we can do, I'd like for us to start forward and say, we're gonna do these, and get the numbers, and that way we know where to go with it from here. I think it's kind of hard to say, let's spend five more million, and then all of a sudden we only have two left, so I don't want us to, because, I mean, prices are insane right now, and everything is so much higher. You, you estimated fifty percent higher on one thing, that might not be enough, so.
So, is the board, um, happy or, uh, okay with the information you've been providing so far?
Yes.
So, you don't need any additional information?
I, I for one, thank you for this. This is, this is fantastic. I love having this list, and I always, it's good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're gonna have concrete number estimates on, exactly, exactly what's gonna fix.
But we've got to have a, a backup plan for the rest of the project, because if we don't, you know, we're gonna be under a real tight, tight term then, I don't, this.
Now, you've dealt with this so much, one I have, so if, if we were to sit back and say, and let's just, just for grains of sake, this is what we're gonna do, we're gonna do these six projects and these five projects, and this is exactly what we're gonna do. And we hand this to, to Nene or whoever, whichever group we do, how long is the process from going if we voted tomorrow night to do eleven projects? For those projects to be prepared and sent out for bid, and then, I mean, to get an architect to actually look at giving estimates, I mean, what timeline are we looking at for that whole process to take? Because I know that, I mean, once it has that, and get all that together, and it goes out to purchasing agents, I mean, I just don't know the, the time.
I think, first of all, I don't know if the person who would want, and Ingrid might wanna jump in, whether they'd wanna send a RFQ out for architects, and I, and I don't know if they'd wanna do one architect, because that's a multitude load right there, or smaller ones. Now, I know if we have already used an architect on like a roofing job, I think the name, or not the name, but I think Chris can piggyback, and I'm just, this is just Charlie's opinion, okay? That we don't have to go through the RFQ process, that they can go ahead and use that architect.
Since we already had an architect do, uh, East and Indian Springs and Mary Hughes, give us ideas, and we didn't have to do an RFQ on that, wouldn't they be the architect of record to go ahead and use it?
See, I think when I did, when I did the pod at Indian Springs.
Right.
Well, see, we, we could use the same architect at East Vocant, and we didn't have to go through them.
Right.
So, you might do, the roofing could be one, or you follow what I'm getting at, but that would be a purchasing agent decision on what the legalities is on all that, I don't want to go assuming too much on that, but I think.
Run into, um, issues or concerns there as ESR money and the requirements with that, so I would reserve saying yes or no to that one, because they are very, uh, strict on these items.
In any project we do, I, we have to do a wage report, you know, the other way, that's the be, that they, that's the biggie, that's the biggie.
So, the, the process on this, if we were tomorrow night to say, these are the projects we're gonna do, then they have to be submitted through ESR, for ESR to say yes?
Well.
And then we get architects to say how much, or no?
So, what I would, if you approve this tomorrow night, then on Friday, what I will do is list those projects in that fund, send it up. By the time across the street does their bidding process, it should be back on the state.
Okay.
Because as long as I list everything, even if we don't end up doing everything, I can go back and edit it at that point and say, we had to take that off the list and that off the list. I would just list everything that could be out there.
Yeah, because, I mean, we don't know, I guess, I'm sorry, but, um, with the architects, once the architects look at it, they give us more of a concrete number. But still, that has to go through the bidding process, or at least through the purchasing agent, right?
Right. We would, if the board takes an action tomorrow evening, and we do have an agenda out of four, um, and I can't find my agenda right there.
Yes, 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 it's on there.
Yes, it's on there, but if there's a, a board, uh, motion, and something goes through, then we'll be submitting things Friday. Now, Friday's, today, Friday, the day before holiday on Wednesday, so we may run into some problems there, but if not Friday, certainly Tuesday.
But Angie said something that we didn't care about, if we go ahead and get them on the list, we may take them off, so I think it's important to try to get projects ready for the other five million that we're talking about, if we've got any ideas of what we can do. Cause you could always take those off, couldn't you?
I could, what I did the last time, and they approved it, was, um, I basically put that we would do sixteen million dollars worth of HVAC and HVAC mechanical work at various schools. Now, they may want a little more narrow vision now, but, and they approved that last time, so I would just list all the schools without tagging in the amount, and just put the whole amount.
All I heard was approved.
Whereas on some of these projects, we were able to take things directly from the names list, which included electrical, you know, we may have to have some contingency there for all the HVAC work when it starts coming, some electrical, so I think, I would think that we would have information within the next two months to give us a total, so then we would know, do we have three million left, four million, or one million?
Did, did we ever clarify whether the money had to be obligated or spent?
Right, and it's, I've heard it both ways, and we've seen it both ways, but the, I told you all that it had to be obligated, but I'm getting more information now that it needs to be spent. Now, I know that the, um, Larry Bailey on his last opinion was that it had to be obligated, but that was their funds. I don't know how, how much our funds differ from the funds that, the federal funds that came through the commission, so.
Are they running everything through the comptroller's office, or are we doing the same thing they're doing, that is, with the comptrollers basically guaranteeing funding for the approved projects?
I'm sorry, I was looking up, I wasn't.
That's what I thought, yeah.
But, Inger, can you answer that question?
I'm sorry, I was looking at something else too. Were we running everything through the comptroller, is that what you said?
Yeah, but the comptroller at one time s- said if it went, if it went through him, correct, I'm wrong, Matthew, if it, if it went through him, basically the state is guaranteeing the fund, in other words, if it's approved and the state has given their okay to it, then the comptroller will be the one that's.
We had that option, um, whenever we went through the commission.
Yes.
We were gonna give the comptroller the authority to go in and approve everything, so therefore, we wasn't held responsible if something come back, that. So, the county doesn't have the state board of education that comes through and approves everything, everything that we do has to go through the state for approval. Um, the county doesn't have that option, they don't have an east plan that says, okay, we submit this, and he goes through all those approvals. So, I think that's why the county selected to do comptroller approval.
Okay, so we?
Now, we don't go through the comptroller's office specifically, but we go through our department of education people, and they approve all that, so I would think if we get that approval, then we're guaranteed to have it.
And what? That, we're, we're good to go then?
Yes. We didn't go to comptroller's way, the, the county commission did, and we voted not to do that, that we would hold our own money, it was sort of fact the, the entrance.
Yeah. If, if we said, uh, anything, or you said HVAC and roofs and classroom renovation, can you add classroom renovation as a?
Sure can.
Placehold, I know East has to give the, you know, half, half a million dollars for the sound slabs.
So, what I would write with sound slabs is, I would talk honestly about the ventilation system.
Right.
And the hoods that would be needed for sound slabs and spacing and.
I'm just looking, I'm looking for placeholder that.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, we can put that in there for a moment.
Is, Inger, is that a long process for you also, or is it just totally, as far as that, the getting all the approvals through the state, or?
Well, to be honest, Angie has taken that on, she does it.
Okay, okay.
Um, she does a great job of getting it all, you have to put a narrative in there and explain everything that you're doing, and she
So, it's the same process?
is wonderful with the wording, um, she gets it in there and submits it as fast as, if you do this tomorrow night, she'll have it in there by lunchtime on Friday. It'll go, no, the hard part is sitting and waiting, that's the hard part.
Always.
And there's nothing we can do to speed it up. We've tried to, hey, look at this, at this, and that's the hardest part, and.
I, yeah, it's gonna make you, but, but we're still talking about just one process, it's not two separate processes, we're, okay, fantastic, all right.
Mm-hmm.
I just wanna make sure, wasn't another group that had the vision for the company?
No, it's, it's just one.
And you wouldn't even have to list the sites for your, your, uh.
I, I won't plan to list the sites, I'll just talk about.
Right, so it. It would cover several things that's in Inger's.
HVAC and, and.
And the, the need report, yeah.
Yeah, 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 I won't list the sites at this point.
Okay.
We're all list all sites, and then we can, then we'll actually have it too.
All right, let's take a ten minute break, and then come back, and we'll do the work session for the board meeting, if that's okay with the board. Okay, thank you. It is six o'clock, let's come back at six, six ten.
We will now start the work session for the board meeting tomorrow night. I've given each one of you an agenda. On that agenda, a first order of business will be the election of the board chair and vice chair. Then we'll move into the agenda. In your packets you have the meeting minutes from August fourth and August eighteenth. The list of field trips, you have three copy or lease agreements of Left City, Indian Springs, and Mary Hughes. See if I have any questions about any of those items. Right there behind you. I'm sorry, hi. Alright, so if there's no questions, communications to the board. Tomorrow night will be a night of celebration for us in that we will be recognizing our level five growth schools in our school district. Something that we all can be very proud of. We've got, we have had some very good news and I think you'll be pleased with some news that you'll be getting in the next week or so. The next release of information from the state comes September the twelfth. And Rick, write that down. That's when reward schools are announced and also district designations. One thing that I am hearing and I think it will be confirmed in the next few weeks is that this was supposed to be the first year that the state issued letter grades to schools, not to the district. District will still be getting a designation. But schools were scheduled for letter grades this year and I do think that is going to be moved to next year rather than this year. Don't pull me to that. I go to the superintendent's conference, I think it's September the eighteenth, somewhere around there. It's on the calendar, Angie, I feel pretty sure if you see it on the calendar, lifting the calendar where the commissioner will be. And I'm sure- [S02] Eighteenth through the twenty-first. Eighteenth through the twenty-first, so I think we'll get more concrete information then about letter grades. But on the twelfth, we will have, from the state, we'll be making some announcements as far as the next stage of information in regard to the spring, last spring, T cap information. So that will be the bulk of my comments tomorrow night. I will also mention about Labor Day, schools will be closed next Monday. And, you know, I made a couple of other updates, but for now, the highlight of the evening will be recognizing our level five growth schools. Then we'll move into unfinished business. I'm gonna ask Mr. Jones if he actually will be taking care of our number seven, seven A and seven B.
Nothing new on surplus property other than we have advertised the bid, internet bid sale for Lunn Heights. And that will start, I believe, on September the nineteenth and run for seven days. And we had to run that ad for, ran at one time, but it had to give third day's notice. As far as selling gardens or selling milt stew, they have not presented yet with paperwork that they're going to concerning their proposal, not talking about the community group. So if they get that to us, I'll share that with you, but right now that's what's on hold. County Commission did vote to, I think, pursue the idea of securing the milt stew, but I have not had contact with anyone on the mayor's office. Next is selection of the director of schools. And I gave each of you a flyer. This flyer was prepared by TSBA with the assistance of, I provided some assistance. I asked Evelyn to go over the details and she provided the corrections to what I had, maybe assist us with some other people. But the data that's here should be pretty correct as far as the number of employees we have and things of that nature. The budget came straight from our budget documents, I use that number of the enrollment and so forth. This will be posted tomorrow unless you see a error with it tonight. And you'll notice the procedure's listed there. I did put one change that Tanya Dixon asked about when she was concerned about the start date. And I put on, will officially take office on July the first. You know, we wanted to make sure we had someone named by January was, as I told her. And that we would negotiate with them about the days that they would need to work for us to work on budget. But officially July first because we won't have two directors plus someone may not be eligible to come in with the contact reasons depending on where they're coming from. So everything else should be pretty much as we talked about. Talked with her about the interview process. They will give us two names of people that they picked from the group and along with all the applications. And then those two people still have to get the votes of four of us before they will be interviewed. But I wanted to see who they would come up with and how that will, once I will, will come up with. But they have to get the votes of four. And the question that I have for you to think about. As you go through and review those paper out, if you don't have a lot of time to do it, we'll have a few days set up to do that. My thought will be that you would write down the ones that you want to interview and give those to Pat Hall. And Pat then would take the names and come up with the ones that got four, select them before it's big. Has to be four, that's four. And if Pat's done it, that takes any of us out of the limelight as far as having to go through and show that. And he does that for director's evaluations. And I think that would be a smoother process that he would give us the names of those that got four votes. But think about that and let me know tomorrow night if it's something you even want to vote on. I don't think it would require a vote, but I want to come up with a procedure that would get it out of one person here. And we don't need a staff employee having a list of those. And I definitely don't want the list of them or if, whether I'm chairman or not, I wouldn't want to be the one to have the list. So if that works, who would go to Pat, who would do that? Think about that and we can discuss it tomorrow night if you want to.
Only question I have is, what if it comes, I'm not saying what if it comes back and there's nine or ten that have four votes. I mean, I guess we could always modify.
I'll put together a little procedure then if we, if we come up with a number of that. You can say how many you want to interview.
Should we write them as we select the four so that Pat has a right in order?
I wouldn't, I would not, just because the way the work policy is written that you, if you get four. But if we do get nine people, I don't think we want to interview nine.
Do we take those nine then and go back and look at the applications again and then go back with the number four?
And I could put, I'll put a procedure together then that would allow us that if we have more, we'll say five or four, whatever number you want. That we would go back and look at those and see.
Though it's just that small.
Yes, yes.
What about the number that we can actually vote for? If we restricted that, it would sort of stop that problem. If each member could only vote for four people.
I would suggest four as a number. And if you want that in the procedure, don't be late, put that down and that will all be.
Just like it does if that were the case, then it's only twenty-eight votes and it would be possibly high up seven, so that's what everybody knows.
I was actually thinking about giving you what I call five dots. And you put the dots on the ones that you want interviewed and that way you can only, you spend your five, but the four would work.
I think you better to restrict it.
Yes. Did you hear somebody say four is fine? I just put together some steps that we could follow that we addressed Matthew's question and then restricting the number we have. If you see a problem with the flyer here, let me know tonight. And I'm gonna send a message in the morning. She's through biased it two or three times because I found some things, Evelyn found some things and then they probably found a few things too. I think it's, I think it's pretty good, the color by the way.
I saw the wood flash.
Okay, this is what it would look like on the website and the blue is kind of our go-to color. Back to you.
Alright. Moving into new business, not me being a red, but I'm moving on. Item eight A is policy five point two zero two, separation practices for non-certified employees. I asked Attorney McCarty to review this policy after some experience, recent experience. And he has come back and you'll see his memo on the, in the cover page. And then the suggestion or the change in the policy is under suspension and dismissal. Title forty-nine of the Tennessee Code confirms that all non-certified employees are to be hired and employed at the will of the director of schools. Therefore, such non-certified employees will retain their at-will status at all times while working for the school district. The director of schools may suspend or dismiss any at-will employee at any point other than for discriminatory or other reasons as prohibited under state. Now you can see that lines seven through ten is what our policy originally looks like or looks like now. And what that says is before, and you know, it says that the director of schools or designate may suspend an employee at any time when deemed necessary. Before an employee is suspended, he or she shall be, one, provided with reasons for the suspension. Two, given an opportunity to respond. And three, given a written decision of the suspension. Under no circumstances shall a director of schools suspend an employee with pay. And then you can see dismissal. Again, we're looking at a three-step process. So I am asking to change this policy to the aforementioned and what Attorney McCarty has provided. And I will be asking for a waiver of rules and adoption on first reading. Now, I would ask if anyone had any questions or comments. Do we have the cover letter?
I don't think we have the cover, I mean, I understand why we probably, but we don't, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought you did. And it says exactly what is in the policy is changed and then he notes resignation or retirement to remain unchanged. So you wanna, you wanna take a look at that?
That's fine.
I'll pass that down there. Any questions? Alright, item eight B, exam exemption. You all do have that. And this has gone through several revisions with Dr. Palmer. Dr. Palmer, it's on your, it's in, is it not, your board docs? Ms. Buckles, do you care to go, and I apologize, so Chris, do you, while she's doing it, is the calendar in your board doc?
Yes.
The calendar is there?
Yes.
Okay, do you care to make copies of that? It's gone through several revisions back and forth where, to the point where we felt really good about this proposal. The high school principals came before you and asked you to consider the exam exemption. The, and I'll wait till she, probably should wait till she comes back, but the criteria for the exemption will be a three point five GPA. And I, I'm going away because I, I don't, I'm a miss, because I don't want to speak. Okay, this is a stricter exam exemption than what we had before. This exam exemption reads, if a student has a three point five GPA or higher, and that is overall. And has missed no more than two days, they may exempt two final exams at their choice. If a student is given out of school suspension, it is an automatic loss of exam exemption for that grading period, which would be a semester. Excused or unexcused absences, regardless of the reason, count toward the exam exemption. We felt very strongly about that in that there's a multitude of reasons a student could be absent. And you get into evaluating different reasons. And rather than having to make that decision, it's best to just say, or we felt like it was better to say, regardless of the reason, count toward the exam exemption. For the purpose of exam exemptions, the retardies, three dismissals, or combination, any combination of those three. It could be two tardies, one early dismissal, et cetera, will equal one absence.
Extra curriculars not counting against the, this requirement?
No, and, and I'll answer questions about that if I need to. Each student will be responsible for verifying their exemption status with their teacher and be expected to take the final if the student does not confirm the exemption status. Students who confirm their exemption status may take the final exam to raise their final average with the understanding that a final exam grade that lowers their final average will not be recorded. This, the teacher's attendance record will determine if a student qualifies for exam exemption. Mandatory state end of course exams are not subject to exam exemption policies. And then we go ahead and talk about non-EOC classes. Students who qualify for the exam exemption may have their course average recorded in the semester exam, which is fifteen percent column and may choose to be exempt from that final exam. Non-exempt students will have their final exam, exam score recorded in a semester exam, fifteen percent column. EOC classes, exempt students may have their EOC score recorded in the semester exam column and may choose to not take the final exam if they qualify for the exam exemption. And this course is one of two chosen for exemption. Non-exempt students will have their EOC score recorded in the exam column. And again, what's listed there is just a repeat of above.
So even if they got a doctor's appointment and have to miss, that still counts against them?
It counts against them, yes.
But we're gonna let extracurricular leave early for a ballgame and that's okay?
We do that, that's a rarity.
Okay.
And we have, in fact, I've taken quite a bit of criticism for that.
I don't see how that's right, but I mean, not like, because people work, kids go to school five days, so when they're supposed to go to the doctor, they got a doctor's appointment. You see what I'm saying?
It's, some have an easier time of getting the doctor's note than others sometimes.
It isn't our, the law that if it's extracurricular, that they cannot be counted absent, you know, they counted present. On the school attendance that day?
I can't, I can't recite that, so I don't know.
I ain't saying it's right either way, I'm just saying, I mean, kid goes to the doctor, they're sick. And it don't matter if it's excused or unexcused. And then we still got COVID going around, so if they have to stay out for COVID, we punish them for that too? I mean, we're really not, surely not gonna encourage our kids to come to schools sick, are we?
I agree, we should vote it down.
I mean, I like the idea, I just don't like the fact that we're punishing kids if they gotta go to the doctor.
I don't think what Evelyn's saying is if you're not careful.
Yeah.
It's like at work, you know, somebody can, might be going fishing, don't get a doctor's note. If you're not careful, people kind of abuse it. I kind of brought up the same thing, I got to the lecture afterwards. So it's, I see your point, but I think what they're trying to do is to get out of this argument, that argument, this exception, that exception. Where first the line, the simplest way to do it is say it's right here, you get two, two days if you can go to the doctor or whatever you need to. And after that, well, you just want to take the test. But there's no way to have a perfect test.
And I don't, I don't disagree with you Paul, I mean, it's a fair point, but it depends on, I mean, it's a policy that, it's, it's the difference between a right and a privilege. I mean, it's really a privilege of this being granted to not have to take two exams and have a chance to raise your average versus being like a right. I mean, there's nothing to give somebody a right not to take exams. So I, I mean, I get what you're saying, I don't disagree.
The other thing is if they, if they do two, if that count, it's still, I mean, it takes a third one before it actually takes one a day. So if you miss two, you can go to two, two doctors, but it is still the per.
Is it three dismissals out of the same class or is it three dismissals from school?
It's, it's that class.
It's per class for everything, right?
Same class, it's up to that, that attendance in that class, the teacher was.
We have a mystery in one class.
Right, so my point, my point is that if they had to have a doctor's excuse, they can, a doctor's appointment, they can adjust.
They still have the two absences.
Is it, I may have missed it because I didn't read it close, but is it clear that this is a class by class application or should we add that in there?
It says each, and it, and we may need to add something, but I'm gonna go backwards. It says each student will be responsible for verifying their exemption status with their teacher and will be expected to take the final if the student does not confirm the exemption status. We maybe could add something there that says each student will be responsible for verifying their exemption status with their teacher for each class period.
Yeah, I just, I didn't know if we wanted to add it even in the head. Like, should we apply the class by class or period by period?
Because I didn't get it out of there.
That would apply, that would, we make it clearer to apply to everything on the absences.
I didn't get it that way to break it down.
So we can put it at the end of the first paragraph to be applied on a class by class basis?
I'm not sure what the best language to use.
And we'll, we'll talk about that as a group tomorrow and see if we have a better wording for that. But for now, we, we'll find something that we can put in there that's going to clarify that.
I mean, and well, truthfully, as long as the principals and whoever get it out, make sure that everybody understands it. I mean, we can't cover every basis, but if we put the, the intent behind it is for a class by class, I think.
No, but what I would say, and I think Ms. Buckles will agree with me here, and I think Dr. Rouse will too, having all three of us served as high school administrators with exam exemptions, they will picket to death. And they will find, that's the reason, you know, if you're not very strict on, on this.
I've actually, to, to go back to the doctor thing. I, I've actually had kids come in my office and I, and they're wanting to argue with me. And then I'll say, but you were absent, unexcused, here, here, here. Don't worry, my mom will call the doctor, I'll have an excuse tomorrow. By golly, they came in with excuses tomorrow. And I don't even know that the doctor saw them that day, but there was even one situation, and I don't know Ms. Buckles if it was, I, I'm not sure. But there was one situation that actually a nurse got in trouble at an office because we, we stayed right on it. I remember that. And the nurse was actually writing them and I mean, passed them out like candy. But I mean, the kid came in and then actually the kid came in with the note from the doctor. I mean, I couldn't argue that because it had M V by his name.
I had football there and broke his leg during the ballgame.
I shouldn't have left you out of that conversation, I'm sorry.
And he didn't come, he couldn't come to school because he had the broken leg, but they wanted him to be able to come and get the exam exemption because he got hurt on his school activity.
I mean, there's, there's all kinds of scenarios that you could be presented with. And rather than have to sift through all those, it's, I mean, it can, it can become, and what one school does, if you've got two schools, which we do, you may have something happen at this school and I can guarantee you that that word will travel to the kids in the southern school at the same moment. This is what this principal did or this, I mean, it.
And the kids figure out too, and this is a good thing. At the beginning of the semester though, they'll figure out which, which periods they want to miss and don't want to miss because they want to exempt. They want to exempt this particular class, but they don't care about exempting PE exam, if you will. So then they'll, they'll know, I mean, they'll. So then they'll, they'll know, I mean, they'll plan which ones they're gonna be there and which ones they're not, and when to go to that doctor and when not to go to the doctor.
So, I don't disagree with you Paul.
I just, I feel like we're, we're encouraging them to come to school sick now. And I mean, I still, I don't, I got, kid that has doctors.
Or they, they go away because they, there's some kids that will do that.
And they will. I have worked in my office and people said it wouldn't go wrong.
But even without an exam exemption, we have kids come to school sick.
Yeah.
So I mean, it, they don't wanna miss.
The one thing that this was talked about and designed for is to help attendance, but attendance has already been helped, right? I mean, everything of our numbers right now are way up on attendance this year versus last.
Our numbers, our numbers are way up on attendance until last week.
Oh, really?
Last week, we, we hit a wall.
Cause I remember they were like, were really high.
Now, we did see some improvement yesterday and today. Uh, but last week was a rough week. We got some double digit, um, absent, absentee percentages. But we saw some significant drops, uh, yesterday and today, so. Um, I think if we can get through this week and Labor Day, we may, we may be getting there.
I've never asked you, are you recommending this policy?
I will be recommending this policy for approval tomorrow night.
And if there's anywhere that we can criticize the policy, this is my opinion, this is three point five GPA.
It should be a four.
The, what's, what's an average grade? Depends on what?
B, C.
B, C? It depends on what your, what your thinking is there. Some students are challenged to get to C. And should you discriminate against those and say, there's no way you can earn it?
I think that's one of the only things that I actually like to, because it makes them, it makes them try harder to do theirs, I can't.
I understand that.
The bar of just coming to school was not good enough, this one actually got trialed and get a good grade.
And there's nothing that says that this pop, this, uh, procedure could not be brought back for update or, you know, changes or anything like that in the future, but I think this is a good place to start.
I'm not crazy, that's the only issue.
Some, some try real hard and still can't get above a C.
All right, item eight C is the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school calendar. And I will give to Ms. Buckles. So, when I built this calendar, I built in the things that everybody always wants. I built in a five day fall break, I built in the three days at Thanksgiving, and I built in a spring break. That's the three things that everybody always asks for. Um, it's really a straightforward calendar, there's nothing unusual. It's basically the same as last year, just with a little different days. I still have the late start date of August the seventh. Everybody seems to really like that. If you all approve the exam exemption, just a little side note, it just happened this way. If you look at December and you look at May, if a student has not missed and they're able to exempt exams, their last day would be December fifteenth, they wouldn't have to come back for the eighteenth and nineteenth, which would be exam days. And it works out the same way in May, their last day would be the seventeenth, and they wouldn't have to come back on the twentieth and twenty-first. That might be a little more incentive to them as well, um, to come and work hard. But it really is a pretty straightforward calendar.
Do we know yet what Kingsport, Bristol, or spring break, so?
In, in total honesty, I don't work at their calendar.
I just remember in past years, we've always, we have talked about it.
I've kept the, um, fall break, it's basically the same week that it's been for about the last four years. Spring break this year incorporated Good Friday into spring break this year, well, in this calendar. But I don't honestly know, I, I didn't look at theirs, just, just looking at ours.
That's true.
Well, and we, we tried for years to work that out for three systems and I think we managed, what, two or three years total and?
Well, we, we got, usually managed to have the same time as Kingsport City, but we're not ever with Bristol City, same clock. That, that really is kind of the highlights of the calendar here, it's not. So I would ask for you, you know, review this calendar if you have suggestions or anything that you see that you want changed or as to look at tomorrow evening, but if, um. Otherwise, uh, I'll be recommending approval and you all can make any, uh, motions that you see there.
No, man, a couple of past years, I don't know how it combined it was, but we always set this out for some kind of a voting thing. Did we not do that this year?
No, cause I put what they always ask for, which is, they always ask for fall break, is always their number one pick. I guess they assume they're getting spring break because it ends up being the third pick, and then the three days at Thanksgiving is always the second, so it's.
Yes, last year you sent that out for that, so everybody wanted, what everybody wanted. And we did the other calendar, right?
Last, last year, that's the year I was working, yeah.
Yeah, and they always, they always want those three things in that order, so I just build it in there because that's what everybody wants.
As I, like I said, I just remember we usually do it, didn't.
And we used to do, give them a choice of two different calendars, didn't you?
We did, and that didn't always turn out great, because sometimes it was fifty to forty-nine.
Two, one, forty-nine.
Yeah, that's, because this is the comparison.
Does this calendar still have ten snow days of building in?
Uh, it does, it has ten built, built-in inclement weather days.
And three days for in-service.
So they'll have to get two days of in-service teachers, we'll have to get two days on their own, um. And if you'll look under the May twenty-second, you'll see that this calendar has a hundred and seventy-seven student attendance days. Ten built-in inclement weather days, three in-service days, two parent teacher conference days, which are required by law. Three staff development days and three administrative days. And that is a breakdown of the calendar.
Is there any difference, I see that note below it that they have to get, features, they have to get twelve hours of in-service on their own. Is that any different from, okay, I just didn't know.
This year they only had to get six, but it was just because I was able to build in another in-service day. I could build in more in-service days, but it just prolongs the calendar and. The other piece to that that we talked about is we're in a math adoption year, so we anticipate opportunities next summer. And that's not something that I'm looking forward to as a math adoption year.
That will be accomplished before you that first, right?
Yes. It has to be accomplished that the board has got to adopt, not purchase, but has to at least take the action of adopting, uh, the math textbook. And we're getting ready to even get into that process already, and we had a meeting this morning, as a matter of fact, talking about that process and where we are as far as our high quality instructional materials go. And I was very proud of our team and our district as we went through that with the State Department representative that was here this morning because of the three things on her list, we were there on all three. We were already there, so. I'm very, very pleased with that meeting. And I was, I looked, I don't see Kingsports calendar out there yet. I don't necessarily write offline, see where it's at either. I see their twenty-two, twenty-three. Good. I just don't, still don't see it. We generally all do it about the same time, is the problem, we generally all do about September.
I thought they'd already done theirs, but.
I don't know if it's not been approved, I, I don't see Kingsports on their website.
Yeah, I didn't see it there, I'd laid that there, I asked that too.
And one year they did a two-year calendar, didn't they? Those two years, yeah.
All right, so item seven D, and Charlie's gonna do some talking here, but this is, we have put on here Sullivan Heights pool. And basically we want to bring you up to speed on, um, the current status of that pool. And then we'll talk further, Charlie.
Okay, uh, since back last, late winter, early spring, uh, we've only had one group, it's been, it's an outside group using the pool. We're having trouble maintaining the temperature of the pool. And it's actually the heat exchanger, the heater that heats the pool, it's original to the building, original to the pool. The, we got some aftermarket parts and solely, just solely maintained it. But the heat exchanger inside is just completely, completely gone. And, uh, we got a cost this summer of replacing that heater, and we just got a quote from a company in Knoxville. And it's determined to be a boiler, they consider it a boiler, which has to have a state inspection because it's so large. Uh, it was forty thousand dollars, just their quote to replace that. In the meantime, another problem we started developing is we're losing about twenty-five hundred gallons of water a day out of that pool. So we're having to do that, add that to it, which back in the late winter, early spring, it was real cold water and it wasn't maintaining the temperature. Uh, also this summer, one of the circulation pumps has now started leaking around the seals and stuff. Uh, we checked to rebuild that pump, it's about four thousand dollars. Also, that pool has what we call a desert air system. It controls the humidity in the pool area, cause, you know, that's a pretty big size, large cubic foot building. Uh, it also heats it, so it's got its own separate meter base. It costs me in excess of twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars per year just for the electrical, heating and maintaining the humidity within that building. That's not counting heating the water. So, you know, West Ridge is not, nobody's using it but an outside group, that's an awful large expense. And if we maintain that pool, it's gonna be, we just redone East Pool a couple of years ago, and if you remember, it's over a hundred thousand dollars to replace the piping. It's just I think the chlorine in time just eats the pool up, and that's not counting the chlorine and stuff it takes monthly. And I had to have a guy every day that has to spend about an hour checking that pool, making sure all the levels are right. And then of course the health department does their inspections on it too, and if it's out of kilter, they shut it down, but. Uh, it's, it's quite of a big expense right now, and it's gonna be expensive if we maintain that pool. But the middle school's not using it and no classes can use it now because now every, if you do, take a group of kids in there, you've got to be a certified lifeguard, and that's what we just don't have, anyway.
Did you say twenty thousand dollars for the, uh?
The last meter break I got, on this desert air system that controls the humidity and heats that space, the electrical bill for a year was right at twenty-five thousand dollars. And that's not counting heating the water.
Right.
For the pool.
That goes to twenty-five.
About twenty-five hundred gallon per day. Uh, every day, you can go in, we'll have it up towards skimming. And tomorrow when he goes and checks it, it'll be leaking down just below the skimmer, and of course you can figure up the, you know, how many inches, and we've determined it's about twenty-five hundred gallon a day that we're losing now that hole.
What percentage is that like with the, so?
I'm not sure, right, Mr. Spivey, uh, I know we just took the length and the width and, you know, how many gallons to cubic foot, you know, and just took those edges. Uh, I know he made, he put it in Friday and Monday morning, which is over a three day period. It had dropped and he figured eighty-four hundred gallon to fill it back up, but that's a three day period, which is still about twenty, twenty-five hundred gallon per day.
Do we know where the leak is now?
It's not showing up anywhere.
We give you, rent on money from the outside group that used to.
No, we do not.
No, we, that comes back off that, um, preparation.
Yeah, we submit that, you know what I'm saying, and get that appropriation, but you used to get it or whatever. But there is no outside charge.
Can this get through? Did you?
It's the buyer queue to swim club.
Middle school don't have swim teams? Some middle schools still have swim teams, right?
The middle schools, we do not.
Yeah. I mean, that, some of the other.
Oh, um.
School districts have.
I can't, they may, I don't know.
If we have a middle school team, you have to have a certified staff member on duty with them.
We'd have to have somebody certified to coach and.
And teach.
At one point, um, we were able to use our pools for summer, teaching like, um, swim lessons, things of that nature. But Y M C A has, you know, pretty much come in to play in. And even Warriors outdoor pool closed, Legion Pool has closed, um, because, you know, the, the pool at the Y has pretty much taken, taken the, those, uh, that clientele to, to go to that pool, um. We put this on here because, you know, we're looking at a significant investment, um, you know, is it the, uh, desire of the board to, uh, go through the process of trying to find this leak, uh, to continue having the pool, um, when it's not being utilized to its fullest. Uh, but I think the big part here is we're looking at the pump, which is of course at forty thousand, and some contingencies there, which would be about fifty thousand, but I think the, the bigger question is, do we pursue this leak?
So where all do we have pools?
Central, east. Well, and Sullivan Heights, yes, those are the three pools that we currently have.
Are they using the central pool?
Yes, that's where the West Ridge swim team is going. And, you know, spent some, some dollars there last winter, how much, they did a new pump there, um, Charlie. And got that pool in good working order. That pool is probably, east and central pools both have had some significant work.
Yes, I, I know when it was South High School, they had a lot of, like, senior groups went there early in the morning because they were actually leaving as the kids were coming to school, so they don't do that anymore? Charlie, there's nobody using it but the central swim team?
Nobody.
All right, the water's cold right now. The water's cold.
Yes, yeah, we can't even maintain it.
We can't keep it heated.
So they went as open as it is, like, you'd see them leaving as the kids were coming in.
So if we want to do away with the pool, what's the plan to do with the hole?
Haven't.
Well, I'm just curious because I'm north of. Just kinda got left, so I want it to be like that.
We hadn't gone that far. We.
Did, uh, Boone fill their gym?
Yes.
Turned it into a gym, auxiliary gym?
Yes, at Boone, they filled it in, turned it into an auxiliary gym.
But the central pool is up and running and doing well this year, right?
So far, so far.
Are we fully staffed on coaching that to swim now?
We are at, for the West Ridge and the, uh, East Swim Teams, we both have, we both have coaches.
And how about transportation in West Ridge, Central? I was asked that question yesterday.
They ride a bus, yes. They can ride a bus or drive cars. Not transporting each other, but if you're a senior and you have a car, then you can transport yourself.
But we have buses.
Mm-hmm.
Is that outside the normal contract, or is that something else we have to do special, I mean, is it?
No, they, they have.
Does it do one of contractors?
No, we, it is one of the contractors, but we haven't paid them extra for that. They have buses that lead West Ridge and go in that direction, so they can do a drop there, yes.
Oh, is it?
Mm-hmm.
So it's not, okay, it's not an extra, so it's good.
No. Now, when we transport them, um, when we transported them even to the Y M C A last year, the contractors even made a drop there.
In reference to the leak, in two thousand and twenty, uh, Tipton Builders out of Knoxville, which pools is their four K, they do Viking Hall and they're about the number one place, they re, when we had the leak at East, and repaired that leak and redid the piping and stuff, uh, that bid was a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, that was in twenty twenty. So, you know, if you go that, so you're looking, you know, the increase and all that, so. That was what I spent, June eighteenth, twenty twenty is when we signed the contract for Tipton Builders to redo the, to fix the East Pool.
Hundred seventy-five thousand?
Hundred seventy-five thousand dollars, yes.
My, my question to the board will be, do you want us to pursue, um, the leak? Do you want us to pursue the investment, um, in finding the leak? And we can replace the pump, but it doesn't do any good.
No, you don't waste money on replacing the pump with that kind of a leak.
The, the leak is, is the concern, so that will be the question that I ask the board.
Can we possibly put this off till next month, because it'll be making a decision, what?
That's something that you can bring up tomorrow.
Table that motion, do you think?
I think I'd like to have a plan, like, if, if we vote not to fix the leak and go different, I'd like to have the option for that, because I don't want us to vote to say we're gonna close the pool and not have a plan for it.
And that might be a directive that you give us, um, as to what, what plan, what you would want to be considered there, uh, and we pursue that. I don't know, I, I know at one point, um, there was some discussion about when we had North, the costs associated with filling in that pool and doing something with that. That's been so long ago, and, uh, I, I wouldn't have any idea what kind of costs is associated with that now, uh, I'd hate to even, even say, and, and then another piece of information that we've got there to consider is that desert air system, even if you turned it into a different type facility. What does that do, Charlie, am I going down a rabbit hole here?
Not really, I'm thinking, uh, not for sure, but I think we could still use it to heat the area, but I don't know, you don't, you know, you don't need it to, for the humidity so much. I can't say it costs the same, runs similar, uh, because, like I said, it does really control the humidity in that area, and that's part, that's the way it's designed.
Right now, the pool is closed for all practical purposes, is not, so postponed decision, whether it's not wanting to impact anything other than giving the pool water, right?
And that might even be something we can discuss as well, when.
How's the inside roof?
It's big.
Water removal site. It's a, like, it's. Costs that were.
It's, it's real high, it's probably four number, but, uh, it's high, it's huge.
But, uh, we could probably check with Boone, and it's been several years since they filled theirs again, it's not, when they turned it into the gym, just after.
Oh, yes.
That'll fit.
They didn't, they didn't keep that pool very long at all, they lost. Pools are the most expensive facilities that we have.
I guess that's kind of another one of the things, I mean, gives us time to think about what happens next, because if you just say we're just closing it, that leaves a big, okay, then what, so?
Well, currently, it is closed, just because it's not usable, so it doesn't, that's not gonna affect anything right now. The, the question is, what you wanna do in regard to repairs, and then, secondly, if you do not repair the pool, what are the options for that space?
And what can it create you there?
Just that, what you do is that, is that underwater robotics?
The last thing I have on the agenda is, um, of course, item A will be Escher projects, we spent significant time on that this afternoon. And then item F is the Perkins budget amendment, and.
That's a simple reallocation of funds, we got our reallocation amount, and Debbie has budgeted that into her budget, so that's just recognizing those new funds that we have received.
Any?
Is the Escher project, is that an action item for us to, um?
Yes.
So you'll be ma, you'll be making a recommendation of that?
I'm, I'm, I'm gonna leave the recommendation up to the board for that, after, you know, you've, you all have the document we prepared on the HVAC and the roofs, also the documents that have been given to you from Denise, so, I want, I think that's a recommendation I'll, that will be entertained from the floor, from the board.
I just want to get prepared.
Yes, um, I do not plan on making a, a recommendation for that one. Any questions? Janison, it's seven oh five, Janison, have we made it? Okay, all right, Janison said he had a leak by seven oh, so we're gonna be able to take a care.
Are we still, have a work session, boards are available?
You're ha, we're having any.